Good afternoon, welcome to the September eighth two thousand twenty five City of Apopka Planning and Zoning Commission. If everyone could please stand for a moment of silence, prayer, prayer, and the pledge.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What did I say? Thank, oops, the day behind. During tonight's meeting, any agenda item will have a time set aside for the public to speak on that matter. If there is anyone here that has something that's not on the agenda that's planning and zoning related they would like to speak, now would be the time to be recognized. Very well, item number one has been removed. Going directly to item number two, Legislative Ordinance number three, one, two, one, Small-Scale Future Land Use Amendment one fifty-five M A Board Street Owners Magic House LLC, applicant Amir Gawad. Mister Song.
Mister Chairman, you, the approval of the minutes?
Did we skip that?
Yes, sir.
I don't work well when I get wet. Okay, need to approve the meeting minutes from August twelfth two thousand twenty-five. Anybody have any changes or additions, subtractions?
Mister Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes from August twelfth two thousand twenty-five.
Well, thank you, sir. Motion by Commissioner Washington, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Wood, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, back to item number two, Ordinance number three, one, two, one, Mister Song.
Good evening, this is Johnson Planner with the Community Development Department. The applicant has requested official land use amendment um, for the properties, property located at one five-five M A Board Street. The size is one point two seven acres in size and is currently vacant. The existing future land use designation is residential medium, which allows up to ten dwelling unit per acre. The request zoning is mixed use, which allows up, up to fifteen dwelling units per acre. Because the properties located within mixed use downtown zoning district, amending the future land use to mixed use will make this site consistent with its zoning. Staff and applicant are available to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone have questions of staff?
No.
Well, is applicant here, do they have a presentation?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I, I, I did have a question. As I read that, do I, eh, am I understanding correctly that they're looking to build three dwelling units on that point two seven of an acre?
Yes, you're correct. Um, density wise, if they change their future land use from residential medium to uh, mixed use, they will, they are allowed to build four dwelling units per acre. And um, they proposed, they said they will develop three dwelling units per, on, on this property.
Okay, and that, the, the um, the drawings have not been done?
Uh, we had a informational meeting, but we have not received any um, final site plan yet.
Okay.
Anyone else have questions? Very well, applicant here, do they have a presentation? Very well, is anyone from the public here wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to board for discussion and our motion.
Mister Chairman, I I realize that we're asked to vote on something here, but having limited ability to see, I mean, point two seven is not large. And they're proposing three dwellings, if I wanna call it that on there. You know, it's, it's hard to make a decision without seeing something, you know, some type of draw.
If I may, um, Mister Chairman, in response to Mister Mock's uh, questions. The, it's the property zone mixed use downtown already. So the underlying future land use is inconsistent with the zoning on the property. The comprehensive plan, this property is within the downtown. It states that properties within the downtown area are encouraged to get a mixed use future land use designation. And it's outlined in the report that the mixed use future land use designation not only permits residential, but it can allow a whole bunch of multiple use, mixed uses on the property. So yeah, they're representing, they might do three units on the property, three housing units, but it may not end up being that one day, and this is just a legislative item, this is just a future land use. So the future land use dictates type of zoning, so there is an inconsistency that's really in essence what they're doing, but they have indicated to us that they wanna do three units on the property.
And one thing I would add to that is, eh, if you look, do you have a overhead map of that? That's not like a Google map or a if you look I guess that would be the northwest, there's, I think that's the um, I believe, is that the now, uh, maybe I'm, I'm backwards from where, okay, yeah, okay, I see. But there's multiple places there, if you look directly to the left on the map where it says M A Board Street, there's six dwelling units on a lot that size. They're like small apartments, so it's, it's not uncharacteristic for the area. But, and there, I believe there's some directly behind it, I believe one of those lots back there has multiple units on it also. Cause I, I drove by and looked at it. So, and, and I, I realize that we've already had the zoning courts and that was just a future land use, so I think that's the question.
I have a question.
All right, Commissioner Washington.
Mister Ma, good question. Uh, I've been there, I passed there many times, I can see and know what's happening. Uh, do you have any idea what the square footage is of uh, one ham, fa- one house?
I do not know, um, I have to defer that question to the applicant, but um, their intention is build three townhouses, like townhouses with a three dwelling units. So it will be smaller than a, like regular um, detached single family.
Yeah, that's, that's what I, that's what I thought, just small townhouses, very narrow, side by side.
Yes.
To squeeze into that uh, acreage.
Yes, and then, and then it is permitted to use per the code.
Yeah.
All right, anyone else?
May, may I say something, Mister Chairman, you know, thinking about, thinking about what, you know, you're saying Mister Mock and, and Mister Washington, I I know there's an acute housing shortage in this area, especially uh, something that's gonna be kinda small isn't gonna be that expensive in that area. And I think this is a good use, if we're just putting, chain, making this change to allow to have a little higher density, considering that, as you mentioned, Mister Chairman, the nearby densities are also even higher than the three units. So given that said, I'm willing to make the motion unless there's any other points.
Very well, anyone else have any input? All right, I'll hear your motion.
Can you uh, switch it to the motion, please?
I'm sorry.
Can you uh?
He didn't memorize it.
No.
Slacking.
Okay. Mister Chairman, I'll create a motion to find the proposed change in the future land use designation from residential medium to mixed use, consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the proposed change of the future land use based on the findings and facts presented, presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Thank you, sir. Motion by Commissioner Doomey, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Ryan, thank you, sir. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, Ordinance three, one, two, eight, Planning and Expedited Permit permit, uh, presented by Cliff Shepherd City Attorney, maybe not.
Thank you, Chairman, I'm Andrew Hand, as you know, I'll be presenting uh, this, this evening. Staff has asked me to uh, present an overview of, of what's going on, as well as talk to a, a, an item that I, I suppose there'll be a, a running theme on everything I'm going to talk to you about this evening. Um, it uh, deals with preemption and legislative mandates, all coming from the legislature. Um, both with what I'll talk to you about after this and this particular item. Um, what you have before you tonight, this ordinance number thirty-one twenty-eight is a uh, I don't wanna say overhaul, but um, there are some significant, very significant revisions to the city's plating process. Uh, and uh, in crafting these, our office worked with a number of departments within the city to get to what we all believe is probably the simplest solution um, to uh, what the legislature has told every municipality, every county with over ten thousand residents or seventy-five thousand in the county that they have to do. Um, and that they have told every city and county that they have to do as far as administrative approval of plaits. So this particular ordinance here before you is uh, simply um, an ordinance to uh, allow Apopka to comply with what the legislature has required. Um, the particular order, or particular statutes that uh, have recreated this framework. We have, uh, doesn't have a um, we do have the section number now, one seventy-seven oh seven one, it just hasn't been codified yet on uh, the state site. But it's Bill seven eighty-four, and, and that one's very simple, not quite as complicated as the other. It simply shifts the plat approval process and takes it out of a city council or a city commission or a uh, county commission's hands and says, you have to appoint somebody to do this administratively within the city. It no longer can come before you on an agenda, the final plat approval. Um, what Apopka has done in the interim, uh, I believe you believe we provided a copy of the planning commission and I think I did as an update before, was a, a resolution that was temporary uh, essentially stating that during the process, that Apopka is amending its code, the city administrator is going to be the one who's going to uh, do these administrative approvals. And that remains consistent with this ordinance. Um, so that is essentially where we're at with that. Uh, there's also a statute one seventy-seven oh seven three, which uh, requires cities of a certain size and Apopka is that size, more than ten thousand residents and more than twenty-five acres of continuous land, contiguous land um, for land that could ultimately be changed from agricultural to residential use to create an expedited permitting system to allow permitting to happen before a final plat is approved. And so this ordinance also does that. Um, as I said, really, everything that you see in here is a mandate from the legislature except for uh, one small section that updates some regulations pertaining to model sales home. But even, model sales homes, but even that takes into account this expedited permitting process and, and trying to make Apopka's system work smoothly with that. So that said, just kind of walking you through the ordinance, uh, what you see here. And, and there were a, a few different ways to do this again, essentially in order to keep everybody in the loop. Both the planning commission and the city commission. Um, the idea was to integrate, uh, I guess one thing to point out is that Apopka's only ever had a final plat uh, process. The statute uh, one seventy-seven oh seven three requires cities to, to create a, a preliminary and a final plat system. And so what this ordinance does is integrates that preliminary plat, or at least while it won't be approved uh, per, per se, um, you know, by the planning commissioner so forth, a preliminary plat would be included within a development plan, and so you'd have the benefit of that information. Simply because, really, that's the way it works right now, even though Apopka has a, only a final plating uh, process. Really, all the information, most of the information that you'll see in a plat is included within a development plan of how they plan to break up lots and, and how they're most likely going to be platted in the future. Uh, so, as far as changes, we just have made some changes to some of the tables to make them consistent, to point out, hey, this is the city administrator or designee, uh, so the city administrator can designate Bobby or another planning official to, to do these in, in their stead. If uh, that's desired by the commission and, and by the city administrator. Um, takes uh, the plat decisions out of the city council and planning commission hands, that's just strike through. We have some sections in here that denotes exactly what I was saying, how to handle uh, submissions that uh, have that plat information as part of a development plan, whether it's major or minor, uh, those have all been addressed. And, and one thing I'll point out too, be- before I forget, um, I think that we will probably be looking at some changes in the future coming before you to this ordinance. Simply because chapter one seventy-seven is currently written, isn't consistent with itself. Um, we saw in the last legislative session, session, a, a push to really make some significant changes to various parts of uh, sections in Florida statutes. And those changes may not be consistent with the rest of the chapter that they're in. And that is the case with plating. Uh, while they made it very clear that it's no longer the governing body who's gonna be making these decisions, they didn't change it in the rest of the chapter. When I say they, of course, I mean the legislature. So I believe I would anticipate, I haven't heard any talk about it, but I think they have to come back and finish the job, and we'll probably see that in the next legislative, legislative session, or at least one in the near future. So I wanna point that out as well, this is definitely a moving target. Um, we have just removed some of the graphics that uh, are no longer consistent with what the processes have to be per the statute, so there's some changes in there. And uh, just setting up the framework for the city administrator to make their decision and what they can do versus what they can't do is included in here to be consistent with chapter one seventy-seven. When we get down to the expedited residential subdivision building permit section, that's on page eight of the ordinance. Again, this is a rather large ordinance because it is a very significant change. Uh, what you see in here is fire, far as requirements, when it comes to submittals, when it comes to uh, notifying, um, you know, fire uh, officials, when it comes to bonds, that one hundred and thirty percent bond requirement, when it comes to addressing, when it comes to um, providing proof that the applicant or requiring that the applicant has provided proof that they have uh, submitted the development plans to utilities, the applicable utilities. When it comes to this whole list here, that is directly out of the statute. Um, so that's what Apopka has to have in there, that's why it's in there. Uh, staff did not pick those numbers, staff did not pick those requirements. Um, they have to execute an indemnification of ho- hold harmless agreement in favor of the city to, to get that expedited permitting, so that's included in there as well. Um, that is good because there are definitely some concerns with uh, permitting without a final approved plat and without having the land subdivided. Um, something that typically doesn't happen, and so the legislature did account for that. Now it's in the code, once this is adopted, will be in the code. As far as anything else that you may see, there is just that small provision that changes uh, the uh, allows now up to four model sales home units per builder in development. Because they're going through that expedited permitting process, they're going to have a number of uh, if, if, to give you an idea, if an applicant were to apply, per the statute, they have to be able to build up to fifty percent of their development. In other words, the units, the living units. Um, without having that final plat approved, so it only makes sense that yes, I mean, since they're gonna have that many units on site, uh, in, in talking with the building official, they were comfortable with having four model home units and, and consistent with good practice. And so that is the only change that really isn't uh, you know, directly stemming from the statute, but is related to the statute. And uh, that's it, I'm happy to answer any questions, but, but that's what you all are looking at tonight.
Thank you, sir. Anyone have questions?
Ye- yes, sir.
Commissioner Washington.
Thank you, sir. When I look at this document and I ran through it and um, I, I thought it was a great document. You know, I, I just, all I saw was how you can, how we can streamline the process to get from point A to point B, that's, that's what I saw. So you might be moving something from one position to another position, figuratively speaking. But uh, all the necessary um, uh, checkpoints have been made before it can be platted. So it seems like to me that once they go through all these different checkpoints, in effect, it's been platted, it's meeting the requirements of the plat. Is that correct or wrong?
Essentially, uh, because you know, ultimately, the lines could change a bit, uh, at, at the very, very end, but the idea, and, and there were a number of ways to attack this, and ultimately, with, with staff's feedback, why we settled on this. And, and thank you, that's, that's a nice compliment, because that's exactly what the goal was, to really allow or, or really to try to to make such a big change and really not affect the process in Apopka at all. And, and I think that's essentially what it is, you still get that information, you won't be left out in the cold. Um, so, really, that, that's accurate. It's, it's just a matter of uh, trying to do as efficiently possible as in line with uh, you know, what, what we've seen mandated by the legislature.
Okay, last thing, may I, sir? You still have the floor?
Yeah, you still have the floor.
Thank you. Um, we like to have fun up here. But uh, what would uh, dictate when a minor replat would have to be initiated?
Uh, minor replat is uh, depends on the number of units. Um, I believe it says four or four in here, right, as far as the minor part? But essentially, that would just be associated with a, a minor, a development plan or a, a de minimis uh, um, I guess I can put it this way. Previously, there was an administrative process uh, for plaits that I, I think it was twenty units, Bobby, something along those lines?
Less than twenty.
Less than twenty-five units, uh, that would go to the planning director uh, for, for their review. And so there already was an administrative process, so it's something along those lines. Any, a plat, anytime a plat's required is three or more, um, three or more lots. And so in Apopka, something less than twenty-five didn't go to council previously. Uh, so uh, that remains the, the standard here, twenty-five or less is, is considered minor. And so there's some, really kinda makes the processes a little bit uh, more congruent for both the major and the minor, since everything now is, of course, administrative.
Okay, so basically, when something uh, was uh, planted, went through the development review, the construction site plan, police fire review, et cetera, et cetera, utilities review, all said and done, ready to go, but now something's changed that causes a replat. That's what, give me a scenario, what that might be.
If, the developer, I guess if, if something has changed, I mean, there won't be really any, any developments that are caught up in this process. So everything is gonna go through this process, soup to nuts, that, that's coming in. And with that process has already started since we have the resolution in place. But to answer your question, if a development came in and started to go through the process and made a mistake in where they placed maybe some footings on a wall, or made a mistake in where they played, placed the house, you know, they, they're taking that risk with the expedited, um, if they, and, and that's their election. They don't have to go that route with the expedited uh, permit request. But if they go that route and they were to make a mistake in placement or so forth, and you know, that wasn't identified and that the structure was actually constructed, they may choose to redraw some of those lines and, and make a change to the plat. You may have a difference in the final plat from the uh, the preliminary plat. And we've seen that actually, uh, a number of times um, in the past. Didn't have a, a preliminary plat process, but did have that development plan process where, you know, something was built maybe where it shouldn't be built. And uh, they've had to shift over some of the, the lot lines, even though um, and, and that just is a matter of infrastructure. Uh, not, not talking about a structure, like a, like a house, since they couldn't really build those before, now they can, per the legislature. Does that
Okay.
Make sense?
I understand.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I got something, Mister Chairman.
Commissioner Doomey.
Uh, pardon me. Uh, just second what Commissioner Washington said, I think you guys did a good job of making, eliminate out lemons as far as I'm concerned. You made it, made the process clear. I'll state my opposition again to this, as well as Senate Bill one eighty, because I think it's taking local control away from us. And it's, you know, I, I get on the one hand, they're trying to standardize and make it easier for the builders to have less unpredictability. But on the other hand, we live here and we know what's going on in our community, and it's taken away our um, checks and balances in a way, so I disagree with that. But I think you guys have done a good job at uh, trying to codify this to meet the intent that we are required legislatively to meet, so, that's all.
Thank you.
Very well, anyone else?
Have, have a question. So if I hear you correctly, there's one person now that's gonna be responsible to review the plat?
No, ultimately, they're responsible to have the final say on approval or denial. But the plat will still go through the same process where it will have the D R C review. Uh, what's required is that there per statute be a two-step preliminary plat process prior to expedited uh, approval for permitting. And uh, that will still go through essentially work the same way that it works now, except that staff will have to, it's not in the ordinance, but it is in the statute. Staff will have to be wary of some timelines and communicate with the applicant of when things are going to happen and make certain guarantees of when the reviews will be complete. That's really the only thing that changes. So uh, other than, of course, going to planning commission and, and council. But on the other side, it still goes through fire review, still goes through police review and, and everyone in D R C. And they still look at everything and essentially will advise uh, whoever ends up, you know, doing the administrative approval, whether it's the city administrator or the designee, this works or it doesn't work. Will still end up doing a legal review to see if it complies with chapter one seventy-seven. Uh, surveyor will still be doing a review to make sure it complies with the technical aspects of chapter one seventy-seven.
My experience is that state legislature never does something without multiple people coming forward and presenting something. Our past process, essentially, my question is, what were we doing wrong? That it led to the state legislature saying, you guys are holding up development. And the way you're holding up development is detrimental to something.
I have to speculate at that, given that I didn't attend the hearings, but plating and land use are, are sort of my thing. So I do have insight into what I, I think it did. So I do have insight into what I I think a developer would find frustrating and from what I've seen developers express in other uh jurisdictions. And I think it's essentially two things, I think sometimes a plat approval, you know, we've we've talked a number of times about quasi judicial. Legislative and and those type of decisions. A plat is is really almost uh neither, it's almost administrative approval in and of itself. Because it is just straight compliance, do you match and meet up with these checkmarks? And so you might hear from a developer, why do I have to go to a city council when they've approved all my plans, where they've approved everything that uh gets us to this. Point and um now I, you know, I'm I'm rehashing something that. Really should be, do I comply with code or do I not? That would be one frustration, another frustration might be, a plat review is very, very intensive, it takes a number of eyes. Number of departments to look at and some jurisdictions, especially smaller jurisdictions, much smaller than a PAPCA, that process can take a long time. And a PAPCA happens very fairly quickly, so I don't think that's an issue here, but timeliness certainly can be an issue in some jurisdictions. Is that enough for the legislature to act and say, we're going to do a total one eighty and change the way this works, I don't know. But what I do know, as far as the expedited permitting. That simply allows developers to build where they weren't allowed to build before, not where, but when they couldn't build. Previously, they had to get, you know, in in just about every jurisdiction, get the final plat and until that final plat was approved, they could build infrastructure, but they couldn't. Build structures, they couldn't flush toilets. Now, you know, they can start building if they comply with the statutory requirements that have to be integrated into code. And and start building well in advance of actually getting to that 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 stage of applying a plat approval. So for a developer, I don't know that it was something that was wrong. But they're able to mobilize and start construction, start flushing toilets, making use of utilities much quicker. Than they would be able to without the legislation in place, whether that's a good thing or a bad thing. I can't tell you, it certainly erodes home rule power, certainly advocate for home rule. That's where we're at until the legislature changes their mind. But uh some speculation in there, but but those are those are the facts and that's definitely the way that that I see it. And what I've heard from from developers as well as observed over years of doing this.
I can almost hear the conflict news story now.
Anyone else? The the only, I I do have one, well, I mean, one statement I I I think that needs to be clear uh that it's not a hundred percent clear. Every permit still has to have the engineering and the plans turned in and approved. Prior to anybody turning to uh turning dirt, so it it's not like. The the plat plan is the overall, but the individual, what they're doing on site has all been through engineering and it's been through the before the permits issued. The engineering for the plan is there, the engineering for the water retention area for the streets, all that's already done. And approved or they wouldn't get the permit, am I correct in that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so basically the nuts and bolts and the hard work have been done, this is more the big picture for you. So I I I and I I understand your question and and it does seem, you know, if it's. If it's that onerous today to get that done, we sure got a lot of houses coming out of the ground if it's that hard of a process, so. Uh it it's curious to me, what was the actual impetus for for this bill? And going along with the the apartment complex bill they just shoved down our throat a while back, it it begs the question, so that was it. Alright, thank you, sir, there are no other questions? We have it. Alright, that's the only item for discussion, unless anybody else has something else?
This is an item that you need to vote on and it's a public hearing, so you need to, so it's an item you need to vote on and it's a public hearing, you need to, yes.
I thought that was information only.
No, this is an action item, yeah.
It's coming forward for you just for review and and recommendation to city council and for a finding of comprehensive plan consistency. And and Bobby, I, do you want to speak to the comprehensive plan consistency?
And regards to Senate Bill one eighty or?
Or regarding this ordinance.
Yes, so this ordinance is consistent with all aspects of the comprehensive plan and with the adoption of what the state legislature has implemented, not only on a PAPCA. But statewide as well, so it is consistent with all elements of the comprehensive plan.
Okay, alright, do we need to uh have public comment?
Yes, it's a public hearing.
Alright, does anyone here from the public wish to speak on this matter? Very well, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Uh Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion. Uh I would like to make a motion to approve uh ordinance number thirty-one twenty-eight and find it uh congruent with the. Comprehensive plan of the city and also with the intent of the state legislature in this matter.
Very well, thank you, sir, motion by Commissioner Dooley, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Washington, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Alright, items for discussion, we have. Legal apartment overview of new state planning laws is the only thing we have left.
Yes, sir, and I'll be very brief on this, this is not new, I've spoken on this before, um and I know that uh my partner Cliff Shepherd has spoken on this. Multiple times at the uh city commission meetings, um but uh. I know we'll be going over a few different legal topics in in meetings when there's some time, this is one of them. There are a number of statutes this year that uh were adopted or bills that were adopted that have become statutes that do affect planning. But just focusing on Senate Bill one eighty for now, this is the bill, of course, that uh. Does really two things when it comes to planning, the one section, the very last section and. Again, this bill was adopted on the very last day of legislative session um with with minimal review. There are a number of local governments that are taking issue with it, I understand there's a lawsuit challenging the constitutionality. It's going to be forthcoming. And uh there's a number of counties and cities that have created delegations that are providing feedback on Senate Bill one eighty and and how to amend it. Uh amend the statute to. Accomplish what the legislature was trying or attempting to accomplish without going. Without going overboard uh and really affecting development as a whole as opposed to rebuilding. What this bill does and again, it's a long bill, forty-eight pages. As far as planning in the last section, uh calls out counties and cities that were listed in the federal disaster declaration. For hurricanes Debbie, Helene and Milton last year and each one of those local jurisdictions may not propose or adopt any moratoriums on construction. Reconstruction or redevelopment of property that's damaged by those hurricanes. They may not propose or adopt more restrictive or burdensome amendments to their comprehensive plan or land development regulations. As we've seen, we've got some feedback on the uh comprehensive plan amendments that came back, um finding some of those to be more restrictive. And then kicking it back to the city of PAPCA after all the the work that went into creating those amendments. And uh may not adopt more restrictive or burdensome procedures concerning review, approval or issuance of a site plan, development permit or development order. That's very broad and that runs uh. Up to October first, twenty twenty-seven and runs back to October first, twenty twenty-four. That puts a lot of jurisdictions and um I don't know that it had a a real effect on a PAPCA. But a number of jurisdictions passed ordinances before this bill was filed that now apparently are invalid. And so that's that's a large problem that um that isn't going away until it's addressed. There are strict repercussions and if if it's not followed, providing cause of action for affected property owners and developers. To uh essentially challenge and unless a a change is made to those regulations. Basically, a large recovery could be a possibility and so really it ties the hands of local governments from. Really take undertaking any significant planning efforts uh to make significant changes to their comprehensive plan unless it's. Clearly less restrictive, um and that bleeds over into other areas too, uh there's been some legislation filed when it comes to impact fees and so forth. And we'll see how that pans out. I don't know that the legislature intended that, but there's been enough uh. Feedback directed to the legislature that I do hope that they'll clarify and we may see some action in the next legislative session, certainly if I hear anything, I will be sure to keep you updated. You know, when the time comes and and when um I do have information on that. The other part that is a bit significant uh is forward looking, that's more backward looking because it's dealing with last year's hurricanes that came through. The other part of the bill uh essentially states that uh if the county is listed in those federal disaster dec. Disaster declarations. Hundred miles on each side of the hurricane track and the areas that were listed cannot make more restrictive uh. Changes to their comprehensive plan or land development regulations for a period of a year after the declaration was made. So looking forward in the future, if there's another significant hurricane season, um that could tie the hands of a PAPCA for yet another year. When this the last part of the section is no longer applicable, um also all the same stuff is in there when it comes to moratoriums and all of the other uh restrictions. So uh that's where we are currently and 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 we'll see where the legislature wants to go with it. But uh at least for the time being, there won't be any changes uh until the next session. Any questions on that, I'm happy to answer it.
Alright, I I I have a quick question. Since the our rewrite with comprehensive plan, did they change it or did they just simply interpret it? Because of the 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 broad nature of it, they just interpreted that we weren't in compliance? And 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 that would lead to the follow-up question, how will we know when we are in compliance?
So the state.
Continue to to submit it to the teacher and see if she gives us a good grade or.
Pretty much, yeah.
Without specifics, how do you comply?
So the state identified the policies that I emailed all of you and then they identified three others. They focused on open space um and uh infrastructure. Uh specifically denying a development order if there is no capacity in the system, that was one that they flagged. And then one that's almost verbatim that's in the existing comp plan, they flagged because the words where possible was removed. In regards to buffering from springs and sinkholes as well. They did all give us the courtesy of letting us know which policies it was, the person I spoke with at the state said, his advice is to take that out. And then come back in and try again, that's pretty much what he said.
And uh to answer. Another portion of your question, Chairman, is the how would you know beyond that? Essentially, even if the state said, hey, everything looks good here and it were to be adopted, if it were challenged and found to be more restrictive. And let's say we have a scenario where we have a a property owner who says, well, it's more restrictive, city says, I don't think so. And there is to be a lawsuit there, then ultimately a court would decide and make that decision. So uh that would be the the final arbiter, there's really no way to know until it's tested in court if it's something that's not clear. You know, clearly more restrictive.
And then and and the hurricane triggers the one-year moratorium, correct?
Going forward, yes, in in the meantime, well, not not a one-year moratorium, but the ban on moratoriums.
Right.
So uh but.
How close does the hurricane have to be, you you said it's within?
One hundred miles.
One hundred miles of that path?
Federal disaster declaration.
Which is easy, depending on the track of a hurricane to again cover the entire state.
Right, right, unless it's Pensacola or Miami, we're in trouble, alright, okay, I'm sorry, I'm not supposed to go first, anybody else have any questions?
No, I, Mr. Chairman. As you saw in my email yesterday, I was uh thank you guys for providing that information, it's disappointing again to see uh some of our protections. Be whittled away, especially around the springs and you know our open spaces, I wish the uh localities much success in suing. Their legislation, their judicial remedies for these kind of overreaches from the state legislature.
Anyone else have question? Very well. Alright, somebody probably needs to see how much money the builders are donating to Congress in Florida. Alright, if there's no other matters, meeting adjourned.